...council for Tuesday, September 13th at 6:35 PM. Sorry for our tardy start. Please stand for our invocation, followed by a moment of silence.
Father, we thank you for this great town. We thank you for the men and the women that protect its citizens and serve its citizens day in and day out. We ask that you would give us wisdom tonight, God, that we would be good stewards of all that you have blessed us with. And Lord, even where we disagree, we ask that you would help us to remain united so that we can progress, that you would give us the wisdom, God, to rise above all tension that naturally raises its head. And we just ask that you would protect our town and be with us. Give us wisdom and keep us in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Please, you're made standing for a moment of silence. Are there any veterans in the audience tonight? Sir, would you please lead us in a pledge?
I don't know. I forgot.
Just say, "I pledge allegiance," and we'll join in.
I did say it all. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk Trezor, can you please call the roll?
Certainly.
Thank you.
Councilman Spann?
Present.
Good evening, Councilman Hardaway. Good evening.
Here.
Councilwoman Minchuck, good evening.
Here.
Councilwoman Muzelek?
Present.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Councilman Pettit?
Here.
Good evening. Councilman White?
Here.
Good evening. President Bell?
Good evening, Kelly. Glad to be here. Seventh president will move on tonight to petitions, communications, acknowledgements, and remonstrations. We have a special presentation tonight by John Cannon. Is John here tonight?
I am, sir.
Please approach the podium, John. John is our Northwest Indiana representative from the office of Attorney General Todd Rokita, and he has a short presentation for us.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, council, for having me here tonight. I do not come from Indianapolis. I come from Portage, and I held a position that many of you are holding now for eight years, so I understand what you go through each and every day, and I appreciate what you do, and so does the Attorney General. I'm here to speak a little bit about what our office has to offer to your town, as well of other towns and cities that may be watching over the Internet. We offer an advisory opinion, free of charge, to you all from our 250 attorneys that are in Indianapolis in the, in the, in our office. And that is, every year in July, there's new laws that are passed by the legislator and signed by the governor. And sometimes they're difficult to understand or confusing, rules or regulations or laws. So you can request of an opinion on how to implement those in your town, any rules or regulations, and we get that back to you pretty quick. I'll leave each of you one of my cards. Instead of going through your state rep or your state senator like they, they would like you to, I'll be able to help you with that if something comes up, so I will leave that with you as well. We are also in the business of protecting Hoosiers with consumer, our Consumer Protection Division, which issues recalls to our, to our citizens the first of every month. Just a couple months ago, there was a recall on a police vest that we found out that was a, could endanger a police officer, because that was on our recall list that maybe most departments wouldn't know about if we wouldn't issue that, that particular information. So we also, in the consumer protection business, we try to stop all these crazy robo-calls and scam calls that each of us get either via text message or a phone call. There are 80 billion phone calls that come into the United States' phone system every single month. Our Attorney General led a bipartisan group of Attorney Generals, 23 of them, matter of fact, to stop 1 billion, just to scratch the surface. But they are working now with all 50 AGs and two from the territories to sue the Federal Communications Commission, the FCC, to stop all calls coming into our phone system from overseas. The last round was from Singapore and from the Philippines, but this round is for the entire world coming into our phone system. So we are encouraging each and every one of you to contact your congressman and contact our U.S. senators to let them know that you would prefer not to receive these phone calls from all over the, all over the world into our phone system. That happened when we, when we split Mall Bell up in the late '70s. That allowed that stuff to happen, and then when you get cell phones involved, that's even an easier situation, because most of those are via satellite, so. So we do, we are working really hard on that scam call situation. One of the things that is going on right now that we're trying to get folks to really understand, and I'll tell you a quick story. It's not very, it's not a very pleasant story, but it did wind up being a good story in the end. A gentleman called a grandparent in Indiana a few months ago and said that their grandchild was abducted and being held for ransom on a scam call. And the grandfather went to the bank and did exactly what they asked him to do on the phone call, and luckily, the bank asked some questions, and they offered to the older gentleman to call the granddaughter while they were at the bank, and he got a hold of her, knowing that, made it, that made him know that she was safe, and it was a scam. So that's going on. There's just horrible, horrific things out there that are going on, that our office is prosecuting that particular case, along with, well, we're backing up the prosecutor in that particular county. But I do, I will leave some information here on the grandkid scams that are, that are out there. There's also for, for some of us gray-haired folks, President, Rick, I mean, you know. You smiling? There you go. Okay. We, there's an older scam going on for older folks like us that are online, trying to get a date, and that's another one that is a big scam. Send me your $250, and we'll meet up somewhere and go on a date. And a lot of us gray-haired people fall for that, unfortunately. And so I'll leave you that information as well. I'll leave it with Clerk Trezor if it's okay. I'm not sure who that, who's the clerk, oh, there she is. Sorry. Sorry. You also might have get a, get a scam or a text message saying that you've won $5,400 from, from some organization, maybe from a casino, or maybe from somewhere in Nevada. That is also a scam that we are working on. Each and every day, our lawyers and our investigators are looking into that. So that's just a small sample of some of the things the office is doing for Hoosiers and for, for towns and for all of us. Identity theft is a huge deal. People are asking for all your information possible over the phone. If you get a phone call from the IRS or from the Indiana Internal Revenue Service or Social Security Administration, they will never call you, folks. They will send you a letter with a code, and then you must provide that when you, when you call in, so please don't fall for that one and give any information over the telephone. You call that number back and verify before they do that, folks. So please, please be mindful of these crazy scams and, and really, as we, as we say, these horrible people out there that are taking advantage of Hoosiers each and every day. And we do have a recovery plan. I don't have enough to leave with you all, but you can go to our website, of course, and if you do get hacked or get identity thieved, we do have a recovery plan available to you, to help you out. One of the biggest things we do at the Attorney General's office is we hold 700, nearly $750 million in, of your money on unclaimed property. 750 million, and we're not the biggest state that has the, has the most. There are some states that have up to 1 billion of unclaimed property. And so what is unclaimed property? It is items that, after three years, the bank can't find an owner, it has to be turned over to the state. An insurance company that can get a hold of you with a refund has to be turned over to the state. And the state holds that money for 25 years and one day to, before it gets into the state coffers. We have a heck of an eBay site for items that are on, that are left in safety deposit boxes, and there's some, there's some real gems, I mean, real gems, in safety deposit boxes that are left. So I encourage everyone to go to indianaunclaimed.gov, and I'll leave some of these with you. Just an example, I was at the state fair working, and the queen of the state fair stopped by, and we thought it was just a, you know, a nice gesture for her to stop by the unclaimed property division, and she asked us to look up for her father, and we found him nearly $40,000. He knew there was some unclaimed property under his name and under some people's names that he was heirs to. He came the next day and bought us all lunch for finding 40,000, so we thought that was a pretty good, pretty good trade-off, but, so please. Municipalities also find items, police departments, fire departments. I know some here in the region, some fire departments and police departments have found unclaimed money from some grants that may have not have got all of it to them. What happens, and I'm not blaming this on anybody's clerk treasurer, but what happens is, once the grant has been given to the town or the city through the departments, they kind of think, "Well, we got it all right." Well, then later on, they find out that the federal government's had just a little bit extra somewhere that they send out, and what clerk treasurers do is, "Well, we already received this. This must be a scam, or this must be, you know, something that, that is not correct, and it goes by the wayside." Well, that goes into unclaimed property for the town after three years of not getting it, so that's something to think about if you, I know it's not a lot of money, but maybe you can buy somebody some lunches, right, or something like that, with, you know, 500, 1,300 bucks, something like that. So the last thing that we, that I want to bring to your attention is Medicaid fraud. The money is for the needy and not the greedy, but just last year, our office recouped $250 million, just last year, in Indiana alone of Medicaid fraud. So if you know some, one that you believe is frauding the system, or you believe that somebody is one of our investigators, and every county has at least two investigators, you may not know who they are or where they're housed, but they're out there investigating Medicaid fraud, and we have some great ones that I know of in Lake County that are doing a, excuse my French, a hell of a job, finding Medicaid fraud for, for the, for the needy and getting away from the greedy. Please go to our website, in.gov/AttorneyGeneral, and please let us know about that, so our investigators can get out there and find out who is actually scamming the system. So other than that, I don't have much more, but I will take any questions if the President allows.
Sure.
I'll be happy to take any questions if anybody has.
Any questions for John?
Of course, I have questions, Mr. President.
Mr. White?
Yes, thank you, sir.
Please use your microphone, Leonard.
Thank you, sir, for coming in to give us the information.
Sure, no problem, sir.
I think it's really important. Like when, situations when you have, like relatives, like a mom or dad, they pass away. So how does a, how can I say, a descendant?
Mm-hmm. An heir.
An heir, yes. Would they also be eligible to make the claim on their?
Absolutely. Absolutely. So when you go to the website, if, I didn't mean to cut you off. Did you have more to say?
No, that's fine.
When you go to the website, you punch in that, that particular person's name that you're looking for, maybe your, your grandparent or your parent, and the last city that they lived in, and it'll pull up all those folks that live in that city with that particular last name, and then you'll search for their first name. And then you can, when you go to claim it, there's an heir section where you would, you would click on an heir to this particular person. And then our investigator, or our claims folks would get back to you and ask for some documentation, proving that, you know, you're the, you're the Leonard that you say you are.
Yes.
And it's pretty simple. It takes a long time to get the check after you've claimed it, because we do a pretty good background check on making sure that person is the proper person to receive the heir's money. But that's most of what's in unclaimed property, is things that folks didn't know about. I mean, if they didn't have a will, money just kind of hangs out in the bank, and after a while, the bank has to send that over to the, to the state. So there's, there's a, a good chunk of money, I wouldn't, I don't know the exact figure, but I would say more than half is probably, belongs to heirs of folks that have passed away.
Also, sir, do, do you have to have the social security number to add to that? So I guess that makes sure that?
Most of the time, it's a death certificate.
Okay.
And possibly a, a, a last known address that they have. Maybe you have something that has their address on it for where they lived before they passed, and then your identification is really what the most important part, other than that death certificate.
Okay, thank you, sir.
It was pretty simple. Now, they may ask for some things that, that I haven't mentioned to you, because of so many names might be the same and addresses may be, you know, close to the same. They just want to make sure that, you know, that there's not someone out there scamming your potential money, so.
Okay, thank you very much.
No problem, anytime.
Thank you, Mr. Cannon, for your presentation.
Thank you, Mr. President.
You can just leave materials right there.
I'm going to here on the floor, because the next folks make them up, and I don't want to.
We'll get them later.
Thank you very much, and my cards will be here as well. Okay, guys?
Great. Thank you, John.
Thank you all very much.
Keep up the great work, please. Moving on tonight to the consent agenda, we have the accounts payable register voucher approval for September 13th and the approval of the town council meeting minutes of August 23rd.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Pettit, with a second by Mrs. Muzelek, for approval of the consent agenda. Any questions or comments on the motion?
Thank you.
Hearing not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on tonight to standing and special committees, budget and finance, Mr. Hardaway.
Thank you, Mr. President. We, we're going to meet with, with the council next week, next Tuesday during our workshop to give everyone the update on the budget, where we are, and what we need to do in order to balance our budget. So that'll be the first part of the workshop next week, and then after we meet with the council, then we're going to bring in all department heads and give them the same spiel and ask them to take it back to their employees. That's all I have.
Thank you. Council affairs, Mr. Pettit.
No report.
Public Works and Utilities, Mr. Minchuck.
Yes, we have a meeting scheduled tomorrow, executive session at 5:30. The entire council is invited to it to discuss matters at the Public Works Department.
Thank you. Elections, public relations, and town beautification, Mr. Pettit.
No report.
Environmental affairs, Mr. White.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm looking at the most recent data we got. The CDC seems like they're bouncing around with this thing, because I know earlier this week, I had seen Lake County was in a high mode in terms of the community level, risk level. Today, prior to me coming here, it said it was in a low mode, so I hope they're being consistent with what, because how do you go from high to low? But that's the information I got. So at this time, for COVID-19, it's at a low risk, according to the, to the CDC. Additionally, Mr. President, there were unfortunately five deaths in the last seven days, based on the information that I have. We had 84 individuals that were hospitalized, hospitalized in a seven-day, as a seven-day average, the reinfection rate, which means those persons had it more than once, was at 13%. Additionally, the positivity rate, and of course, again, last week I seen it at 21%, today I see it at 20%. So those are the data I have in terms of the COVID. Now, here's what I like to say, of course, you know, from my understanding, looking at all the data we have, that the new vaccine is out, and that particular vaccine is specific to the Omicron and all the variants under it. So I heard it's here, I just don't know where it's at. I think when I called CVS today for my medicine, they said they were going to start doing those, those shots, and then what's available. So yeah, I would encourage people to go ahead and get that, that last vaccine, because it does target the one that's out there slapping us around right now. So with that said, Mr. President, I don't have anything else to add. Do you have anything to add, Marge?
That is called the second booster shot, Leonard, and that should be available through Pfizer within the next couple weeks, according to the media, national TV.
Sure.
And are they still cleaning this building with the Clorox machine?
Mm-hmm.
Did you find out?
Yes, we are.
Oh, good.
As, as, it's up at the community center.
Pardon, I didn't hear you.
Community center as well, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And approves it, all the municipal facilities, ma'am.
How often do they do that during the week?
I believe the last time we, we cleaned here was approximately two weeks ago. We'll come in by Friday and clean again. I believe the cleaning up at the Dean and Barbara White Community Center is probably more regularly because of the use.
Yes.
But no, we continue to use the equipment.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
And on your report, Leonard, there was one person that died in Lake County last week.
Yes.
And two in Porter County.
Okay.
So COVID is still out there. Everybody get that booster shot, booster shot.
Additionally, thank you, Marge. Additionally, this monkeypox thing is sitting on a peripheral. I don't think it's putting us in danger, but I do know the vaccine is stored somewhere in Hammond, someplace called Crazy Lou's. I don't know why they put it there with Crazy Lou, but I haven't heard any cases here specific to Lake County for monkeypox. With that said, sir? That's it.
Thank you.
There was one in Indiana so far.
What part of Indiana, you know?
I think it was closer to Marion County.
Okay.
According to the media.
Thank you, guys. Moving on to personnel policy and employee benefits, Mr. Hardaway.
Thank you, Mr. President. Later on in the meeting, we have a ordinance, second reading ordinance for our personnel policy that we look to finalize tonight. I think all of the changes have been made, and so if there's no other concerns tonight, then we hope that we'll be able to pass it tonight. That's all I have.
Public Safety, Mr. Minchuck.
Yes, sir. I've had, we've been having several meetings ongoing throughout the last month or so. As soon as I get some finalization, we'll report back as well. I know at the last meeting, under announcements, I made the announcement about the FOP having that fundraiser for victims of domestic violence. That is next Saturday, the 24th. All proceeds will be going to Victims of Domestic Violence. It starts at noon at the American Legion down the street here. And then I do have one letter of communication on our public safety.
Please.
Please accept, excuse me, please accept this letter as my notification to the town of Maryville that I will be retiring effective 3/3 of 2003. My last official day as chief of police will be 1/2 of 2003. I plan on using the remainder of my summer leave to remain on the payroll until my retirement date. It's truly been an honor and a privilege to serve the residents of Maryville for the past 28 years. I am extremely appreciative that the Maryville Police Department gave me the opportunity to make my dreams of becoming a police officer come true. Furthermore, I am also extremely thankful for all those who took a chance on me, giving me the opportunity to become chief of police. Everybody's support throughout my time here has been awesome. Retirement was an extremely difficult decision for me to make, because never throughout my career did I ever imagine walking away from this job that I love. I truly have been blessed to have worked with some of the best men, women in law enforcement. Signed, Wiley Luther Cuttino, Chief of Police. Chief, let me be the first to thank you for all your years of service to this town, and I wish you the best in your retirement, sir.
Chief Cuttino.
Mr. White.
Additionally, let me be the second one to say, thank you for the years that you were in a patrol car out there. I know one of the thoughts that I had when we were interviewing you, I thought that a person that'd been out there that long had to definitely know a lot about what was going on, knew the community and the people, and I think they appreciate, appreciative of you. It's unfortunate, you know, that you're, that you're leaving, but I can understand, because I retired about five years ago, so it's a good thing. Thank you again, and thank you for being in command of your officers and the great job they were doing.
I want to thank everybody, town council, the citizens, for the support. It's been a very interesting learning experience, and I'm working with an excellent team with the Maryville Police Department, and I'm confident that we will continue to move forward in that direction. Thank you again.
Thank you, chief. Luther, remember when you and I met? You were working security at Methodist Hospitals, I think it was the mid-'80s. Does that sound right?
Yes, I was at Northlake from 1977 till I came to Southlake in 1986.
Okay.
Before I came on the police department in 1994.
So did you ever think we'd both be sitting here in these positions 20-some years later? That's really something.
It's amazing how things happen like that.
30 years later, yeah. Congratulations and thanks for your service.
It's been a blessing. Thank you. Motion to accept, Mr. President.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve and accept the letter of resignation from Chief Cuttino. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
I want to say nay, but.
You can say nay if you'd like.
You can't say nay.
I love you, Luther. Congratulations.
Thank you, chief. Moving on tonight to economic development, Mr. Pettit.
Yes, Mr. President, we have an Economic Development Committee meeting on Tuesday, September 20th, at 4 o'clock. We have one tax abatement petition. I don't want to steal Angie's thunder. I will just say that every day I drive down Mississippi to 101st to go into Amerplex, and what the group at Crowe Holdings are doing is absolutely unbelievable in capital letters. If you haven't been down there, they've already got three out of the four walls on the 250,000 square foot building down there. These guys do not mess around, and I'm very happy to have them in town, so, sorry, Angie, I didn't mean to steal your thunder.
You got it.
Mr. President?
Mr. White.
Yes, this is for you, Mr. Shawn. I appreciate you, the hard work you did down there, because I know you did it. Now, if you can just turn that around and take it toward my inner town.
We, in fact, I will, Angie, you want to take the meeting from Monday with you and Pat and I with the developer and what we talked about on the north end?
So?
Tuesday, yeah, it was Monday, it was yesterday.
Hello? Yes, so we met with a new group, and Leonard, councilman, as I mentioned, I'm always, I'm always the first advocate of, of what's going on and how can we, what can we do up north? And so this is a new group coming to the town, and we gave them a whole, we heard their story and what's going on down south, and then we went into our spiel as how we want them to partner with us, and we asked them to drive down to the north side, take a look, take a round. We've given them specific locations to take a look at and what we can do going forward with them as a partnership and, and help, and help us to redevelop that area.
Sure, thank you. They do, Leonard, they do not only is, it was an industrial site down at 89th and Mississippi that we initially talked to them about, but they also do retail, they do student housing, I think they said, didn't they? So we advise them to look at 61st and, and Broadway, Mr. Israel's property.
Okay.
Because of the potential, we had that 250,000 square foot building proposed that, I don't know where Mr. Israel is at, quite frankly, Pat and Angie. It's, you know, it is what it is, but we had, and I want to, is that called Crossroads Plaza?
Yes.
We pointed them to that and said, "Guys, you need to take a look at that and see that entire Broadway corridor and see what can be done with it."
Okay. You know, one of the reasons I'm thinking, I'm asking this question, Shawn, is that I know back in January, we made a motion to do some things on 61st Avenue, and I was going to ask Pat. Can you give me an update on that?
Pardon me, councilman?
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
No, I was just asking, because I think I asked you a couple of weeks ago, when council passed that motion to do lighting and other amenities.
Right. Can't hear you, Leonard? Can't hear you.
Sorry, I'm keeping, I have to sound like my cousin now, Barry White. I just want to know where we at with that, because I haven't seen that move through, and I appreciate you guys sending the guys down to that part of the area, because that's the, that's the target for me, and people want to see it done. So I was just asking you, Pat.
I appreciate it, councilman. Thank you. I understand what you're referring to. And for the council, what he's referring to is the many streetlights out in his area and in, in the entire north end, but concentrating in his area. There's two types. There's the town lights and Nitsco lights. We're expecting, and it's late, and they're apologetic, but we're expecting a report from Public Works on, on the town lights, and they- from Public Works on, on the town lights, and they, they've been instructed to immediately start repairing those lights and simultaneously contact NIPSCO.
Okay, could you tell NIPSCO, um, we need some lights because it's going to start getting dark earlier?
No, I understand. You're right. It, it's happening now.
Because you know how I feel about that light situation? I, I mean, it's just not basically, uh, our area. I mean, I can come from the side and go down Broadway. And what I did know is, Mr. President, during that time, that when we had that last major storm, it knocked out even more lights, so I just wanted to, uh, bring that up. Thank you. That's it.
Anything else, Mr. Pettit?
No, that's it.
Thank you. Moving on to Parks and Recreation, Mrs. Uszak.
Thank you, sir. Uh, all the parks have been mowed on a regular basis. They look very good, and I have to thank Torrance for mowing that little field behind the park on 74th and Hendricks. Torrance, everybody appreciated that in that area.
Public Works.
Oh, the Public Works did it?
Yeah, Steve and crew did that.
Oh, okay. I thought they were calling you.
Yeah, when we got there, it was already done. They took care of it.
Okay, and then the bike trail? You had someone pick up a lot of debris out there. I had calls from people that are on the bike trail, and I kind of checked on that, and then you went ahead and cleaned up the debris. So thank you for that. And that's it, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mrs. Uszak. Moving on tonight to abandoned and blighted properties. Mr. Hardaway.
Thank you, Mr. President. We met with, uh, some people, Public Works, Parks, and Code Enforcement last Friday to discuss grass-type issues, and I guess we're going to sit down, I'll be with you to sit down with Vicki.
Right.
And whoever here, uh, I'd, I'd say let's do it next week as opposed to this week, and, uh, see if we can figure out what's going on back over 80, 78th and Marshaling and that area. So, yeah, we'll address that, but, uh, there's a lot of blight going on in the town right now, and we just got to get a handle on it.
Yep.
Because it's not getting any better, and so we are, we are aware of it and very concerned about it.
And there was one complaint in that email about a car without, a car had a plate on it in the driveway, so Vicki cannot have that car towed in. She went and checked it out.
Well, here's the other thing that we have while we, you know, is that, you know, people have, um, these mobile homes, and the ordinance says that they have to be in storage after, on November the 1st.
October 31st.
And we haven't been enforcing that, so we got to go back to basics and start enforcing the, the things that we have that have, that worked in the past as opposed to just riding by with blinders on and not paying attention to those little things that, uh, some people pay attention to.
Yeah.
And so I think that Code Enforcement needs to start paying attention to them, and we as well need to start holding everybody accountable for the appearance of the town.
Agreed. And we also need help from all of you, our residents.
Exactly.
Maryville is 30 square miles. It's a huge, huge town. It's the largest town in Indiana, and we can't be everywhere all the time. So please feel free to call the town manager's office and tell us when you see issues and problems at residences. Just give us the address. We don't need a name, and we'll drive by and check it out, and if there's violations, we will take action and make sure it's taken care of.
Yep. Doesn't matter where the complaint comes from.
That's correct. We don't even need your name. We just need what the issue is and the address. Okay?
Mr. President.
Mr. White.
Can we have citizens also call the town manager when they see lights out?
Absolutely. They can call the town manager at any time.
Can, can you give him his public phone number?
Mr. Reardon, would you give your office number, please?
Sure.
And Linda's extension.
Right. Right. Seven, I'm not going to insult anyone here by saying 219. 769-5711. My extension is 302. My administrative assistant, Linda Rosas', extension is 303, and if any of you have my business card, the cell number is on there, so here's my cell number. 433-7332.
Thank you, Pat.
Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Hardaway?
That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you. Moving on tonight to Dean and Barbara White Community Center, Mr. Pettit.
Uh, first and foremost, Mr. President, I need to check the time. I apologize. Uh, we have another committee meeting, uh, for Mr. White, Mr. Minchuck, and myself. Anyone else that wants to attend, um, standing meeting is the fourth Thursday of the month, um, up at the Dean and Barbara White Community Center, and that is at 4:30, uh, next Thursday, September 22nd. Uh, secondly, Mr. President, I want to thank, uh, Councilman Minchuck for working on this. Uh, he's been diligent in doing some of the work out at the Weiss Family Field and associated things with that. To that end, um, Jeff secured a quote from Goff Incorporated, uh, on the Phase 1 that the committee we discussed, uh, and through an email chain with Leonard, and Jeff and I, we all agreed to it. So I'm going to make a motion that Phase 1 will be the entrance gates and sidewalks from the south side of the lot, parking lot to the field. Uh, the quote is for $57,750. Uh, this will come out of the remnants of the bond issue because we decided to hold off on the pedestrian bridge that would go into Turkey Creek, so there should be plenty of money left over in the bond issue to do this first phase, so I'll make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Pettit to approve the, uh, Phase 1, the amount of $57,750 coming out of the bond proceeds for this project. Second, Mr. White. Questions or comments? If you're not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, Mr. Pettit.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Torrance, do you have, do we have anything else? Any quick updates on, uh, upcoming events?
Rose Awards are next Thursday.
Okay.
At the center, and we're also hosting Governor, uh, Governor Holcomb's event on, I believe it's on the 27th of September. There's already 400 people that have, uh, signed up to attend that.
Okay. That's all, Mr. President.
I just want to point out to the residents here tonight, too, if you have not been in the Dean and Barbara White Community Center, stop by, take a look at it. It's at 6600 Broadway. It's where the old Y&amp;W Theater used to be located, and it's quite a building to see, and take advantage of it. Special projects tonight, Mr. Hardaway.
I, I don't have anything tonight, Mr. President. We are, uh, here within a very near future, start working toward Christmas.
Okay.
Mr. President.
That's all I have.
Uh, Mr. Hardaway, we also talked about earmarking some of our ARP funds to help us with the next years and maybe the next couple of years.
Yeah.
Of costs for, uh, 4th of July fireworks, parade costs, Juneteenth.
Yes.
And some of these other special projects, uh, given our tight budget.
Right.
Um, so as soon as we want to have a meeting to discuss that.
We go, you know, we, we will, part of coming out of next week's, uh, workshop.
Okay.
We'll have that conversation.
You want this on Tuesday's agenda?
But, yes.
Okay, I'll make sure. Mr. White.
Yes, Mr. President, um, I just wanted to say something about the diversity committee here, if that's how you look at it. Um, it's unfortunate that I'm going to say what I'm getting ready to say. Fact is, I want you to remove me from the diversity committee.
Okay.
Uh, based on the facts that I've been on this committee over a year, and we have not had one single conversation. So I don't know if I need to make a motion for you to do that, or...
Just your request is ample right now.
Okay, and that's my request. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else, Mr. Hardaway?
No, that's all I have.
Moving on tonight to department and commission reports. Lake County Solid Waste Management District, our representative is Mr. White.
Thank you again, Mr. President. I, at this time, don't have a report. I do know that we, uh, went over some items again, uh, in terms of, uh, some people were asking about, uh, household hazardous waste, why we're not having them in Maryville. So that's something I'm going to take up with the, uh, director, uh, to see if Maryville can host one, or even if Maryville wants to host one. Uh, I know prior in the past that we had held those things either behind, uh, this building, or sometimes in the front of the parking lot, but I think that's something that, you know, I, I will push forward to the next board meeting, which we meet bi-monthly. That's why a lot of times you hear me say, no report, no report, because we only meet every, uh, once every two months. So, uh, basically, that's all I have to add at this time, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Northern Indiana Regional Planning Commission, known as NERCy, Mr. Hardaway.
Our next meeting is Thursday, Mr. President.
Okay. Stormwater Management Resources, Mr. Lake.
Thank you. Uh, real quick, I had pre-construction meeting with Dire Construction. Uh, this is for the Marcella Road Drainage Improvement Project. They're going to be mobilizing at the end of the month. They ordered all the materials, so they should be all set, set to go there. Um, and that was, part of that was a community development block grant money, so, uh, I appreciate the county, uh, for that, awarding us that money. Um, we got engineering undergoing on several projects, including but not limited VS Engineering, um, working on Stormwater Lift Conversion Project at the southeast corner of 69th Place in Connecticut. We're about to put the Taney slash Kaiser Ditch lateral project, drainage improvement from US 3073rd, out for bid. Still working on engineering at Hickory Ridge Lake Apartments, uh, regional basin, uh, Southmore Park Drainage Design, Independent Street Drainage, Phase 2, and we also just have an easement recorded, uh, just the other day for a, a project which I would call an urban ag interface project, uh, which involves, uh, drainage improvements for Grassfield Subdivision, as well as for Auburn Hills, and some protection for Randolph Street, um, uh, at the location of 9401 Randolph. Uh, we also, um, received a grant from NERCy through their community program, so we're going to be planting 30 trees at Rosenbaum Park. Um, we also received some, uh, cost share grant money, actually it's full cost share, uh, from Little Cal for, uh, bald cypress trees, so you'd be added to the 54th Court Rain Garden, and, um, we're going to be doing some drainage improvements at Ross Meadow Farms at the bottom end, uh, just to make some improvements there, as well as Chapel Manor Ditch. Howard's Tree Service can be starting there, uh, in Phase 1 of that as well, pretty soon. That's all I have.
Thank you, Matt. Um, South Shore Visitors and Convention Authority, Mr. Reardon.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Billups. Uh, our next meeting is this Thursday, the 15th. Um, following that meeting, I'll be sharing, uh, I, I'll refer to it as September data, uh, with the council, um, statistics about, uh, stays in the county and also this, uh, monthly, uh, marketing material. Um, and I want to say that the, our new president and CEO is settling in quite nice to the position. Um, no surprise. Um, those of us familiar with, uh, David Duran and his rain run as Mayor Crown Point, he, he really elevated the community, and, you know, that's the expectation here at, uh, the Tourism Bureau. So, that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Fire Territory Board, Mr. Minchuck and Mr. Span, our representatives.
Uh, we have no meeting scheduled yet, so...
Thank you. Department reports. Torrance, Parks Department.
Like we mentioned earlier, we're hosting the Rose Awards on next Thursday at the Dean and Barbara White Community Center. Also, we are hosting, uh, Governor Holcomb's address, um, for the state, also at the community center on September 27th.
Wow, great. Chief Cuttino.
Uh, yes, I'll just make it brief. Like I stated, uh, we have been extremely busy, uh, this summer. Uh, our men and women has really been out there, uh, handling these calls and keeping us safe, and, uh, we look forward to, uh, to continue to get the support from the citizens to, uh, stay on course. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Chief.
Mr. President.
Mr. White.
Yeah, this kind of goes to, uh, both the chief and, uh, the town manager had a community meeting, uh, last week, uh, on the 7th of September. People really want speed bumps. I want them to have speed bumps because they're not seeing anything else, they're not trying to hear from the chief or me. They just want speed bumps. I talked to, uh, Matt, uh, about it, and he has suggested that under our, probably under our recycling grant, am I seeing that right, Matt?
Well, IDIM has a recycling grant program. Um, we had applied for that for actually 24,000 linear feet of recycled pipe. 60% of that would be made out of recycled materials, which equates to 720,000, uh, recycled bottles. But they also make other things out of recycled products like speed bumps, for example, so...
Uh, uh, thank you. So I, I actually, Mr. President, would like to see, and I, I know Steve's not here, but I would like to at least, uh, for the town to purchase, uh, at least 30 speed bumps. I don't think I'll use the entire 30, um, but we have to do something because this is what the people want, and I'm going to give them what they want. Thank you.
We've actually been talking, Leonard, quite a bit about an entire, uh, traffic calming program.
Right.
And we've realized that speed bumps don't work well in the wintertime because the snow plows will hit them.
I understood that.
Uh, so instead of speed bumps, they actually call them speed humps. So it's much wider, it allows a plow to go over it, it's not a, a definite bounce with the vehicle, the car actually goes up and over the speed hump. As you know, we're installing speed limit signs in all seven districts, two per district. I think we're in the process now of completing those or in. Right, Pat, do you have an update? I know Steve isn't here, but it should be going up starting this week, I assume?
They are going up.
Okay.
Not, likely not all in, but they are going up, yes.
Those have been proven over and over again to remind residents of the speed limit, and when people see those signs, they do slow down, and they realize, oh, I didn't realize I was doing 42 in a 30.
Yep.
And a lot of times, there might be a police officer goes by.
Sure.
And we're going to start writing some tickets.
Absolutely.
Please be warned, everyone.
Absolutely, and they understand that often...
We're looking at a variety of things, and if you've caught up with your emails, you may have seen some of that.
Oh, yeah, I, I look at my emails, uh, but also listen to my constituents.
Sure.
And what they tell me. So, um, I, I, that's one of the things I talked to Matt about was the possibility. Now, if there's a, if there's a, another way, less expensive, but have the same effect, uh, then I'm on board with that, but I just want to make sure, and, and I understand that during the winter, you, you can't, I don't even know what type you're talking about would actually have those in the winter.
Yeah, you can't. You can't, that's why they're different. You know, we too, we've installed some rumble strips. I know Mr. Pettit's...
Madison Street.
Madison Street.
After the, after the car went up into the Congress's front yard, uh, Steve put in rumble strips on both the north and south approaches of that, uh, stop sign, four-way stop that's at 76th, and...
Yeah, this is...
I got a call from Mrs. Congress, and she was elated, and Tim was out there watching the guys put them in, Steve said, and he was happy with it, so...
Actually, I experienced those bumps, uh, those rumbles.
Rumble strips.
And it is noticeable when you...
Sure it is.
And starting to slow down, but we need, like you say, we need a complete stop. People do pause, but I, I, I did notice that immediately.
This problem is not unique to Ward 7, it's not unique to Maryville.
No.
It's a problem nationwide, and Chief Cuttino can speak to that.
And I've told, I've told Barry, and I've told Chief, I don't, I don't want warnings in Ward 6. If you're speeding, you're getting a ticket. I've told Barry that in my neighborhood, Chief.
We, we've warned everybody, so... We've warned everybody, so.
You know, if they don't, you know, if they want to call me and complain, why were you speeding?
And.
You got kids in the neighborhoods.
Yes.
You got people, you know, driving. No, I'm not in favor, you know, giving somebody a warning. That's me.
Yeah, yeah, I'm pretty much aware that this problem is throughout the town and throughout the nation. I can only address the issues that are in my area. And hopefully, maybe I'll talk to Mr. Pat, and he can get some things going for me real soon here.
Yeah, actually, Steve, Pat, and I visited some neighboring communities that are using the speed humps very successfully. You just have to sign it properly, they have to be properly painted so people know they're there, but they will make you slow down, I'll say that.
The sooner the better.
Yeah, we need to, so you can't just go out and buy 30 speed bumps and start putting them in on streets. You just have to, you have to have a process, you know.
You have to have a process, and when you make an alteration of the road like that, there could be certain liability come back on the town.
I could share some emails I have with me, not today, but where people say they're walking in the streets and people are moving so fast, that this one guy said he was with his family, and this guy didn't see him, and he had to put on brakes so hard it fishtailed. So here's what I'm saying, I understand all the other things, I just need to have a solution and a timeframe to make that happen. Thank you.
Totally agree. Planning a building, Ms. Shine.
I'll report during BCA.
Great. Angie, economic development, how are we doing?
Thank you. Yeah, as Councilman Pettit mentioned, we've been extremely busy, very excited about what's going on at Silos. I have several people approach me from, actually from other communities, and they're, you know, they know that I work for the town, and they're like, what's going on over there? And I'm like, well, I'll tell you. So it's pretty great when other communities are like, what's happening, because it looks amazing. So we are flooding multiple, multiple, a lot of activity, a lot of people wanting to come to Maryville, lots of leads, so that's very exciting. So hopefully, my next project will lead into this and even bring more attention to Maryville. I've been working on a community video project. We've partnered with a company called CGI Digital. They produce community, excuse me, community video programs. It is a cost-free program for municipalities. They'll produce six different chapters or topics for us. The videos are about a minute to a minute and a half each. I've worked with them and identified some subjects. We're going to start out with a welcome video to talk about the history of the town, give an overview, then a quality of life video, which will focus on education and healthcare within our community. Of course, economic development, new businesses, attraction growth, and employment opportunities for the town. Parks and recreation, we definitely are going to feature our Dean and Barbara White Community Center, our trails, our parks, and some of private ventures, the golf courses and things such as that. The next big topic is real estate and relocation. We will feature our new housing developments and get more people moving into the community. And lastly, we'll feature the non-for-profit organizations. All of the videos that they create, they'll be out, excuse me, they'll be out here filming this month, at the end of this month, so that's exciting. And we can use all of these videos in any type of marketing way, it will be on our website, social media, and if we have annual meetings or what have you, we can also display this. We have a total say in anything that's being done, total control of what we want to see. So again, I'm very excited about the program and to showcase what makes Maryville a great place to live, work, and play.
That's great. Good work, Angie.
Thank you.
Moving on tonight to general orders, we have a first reading ordinance, ordinance 22-21. It's the ordinance of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana. Amending ordinances 22-17, 22-9, 21-29, which is pay for employees of the Town of Maryville, Indiana for the calendar year 2022.
Mr. President.
Mr. Minchuck.
For ordinance 22-21, budget time has not come to an end yet, meetings are still ongoing, so my suggestion would be, or my motion would be to table ordinance 22-21 until we get a better financial report, our final report back in, so we can do more of a, have more of an overall picture and act on this more townwide. So that's my motion to table.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Minchuck, second by Mr. White, to table this for now. And I will say that this topic will be on our next Tuesday executive session, Town Council Workshop, and Madam Clerk Treasure, we're inviting you to attend that meeting.
I was going to ask you, could I speak on your, on the motion?
We have a motion to table, so the motion to table. Sure.
Well, I would ask that it not be tabled. I'm not sure what our budget next year really has to do with me finding and using the money that was allotted for the increase in my salary to try to bring the Clerk Treasure's salary up to commiserate to the other Clerk Treasure's salaries in their surrounding communities. As you know, our salary in the largest town in Indiana for the Clerk Treasure is, I make less than every other administrative official, except for the judge.
And the town council members.
And the town council members.
Especially them.
However, in terms of running an office of seven, sometimes eight and nine people depending on, and having the responsibility of paying all of the bills and all of the payroll and everything else, and all the business licenses, we've now got a new community center, which has added on a tremendous amount of extra work. So last year during the budget time, Mr. Hardaway and Mr. Bella was able to speak with some of the other departments about securing some additional funding for what we do for their particular offices, because they have their own budget, stormwater and fire and hazmat. So I'm not asking for any additional money that's not already in my budget. It's not asking for anything from the town council or nothing from the general fund. This is me foregoing the raise that I would have gotten. I'm just not taking the money that you guys sought for my increase. Instead of me getting an increase, I am asking to pass it on to my employees because the work that they've done when we began, and when they were hired, we didn't have a community center. So they are doing exceptionally, much more work, and of course, they worked during COVID because we had to, as essential, as an essential office. Our employees actually had to come in and had to work, you know, from home on a laptop and actually have to come in and do deposits, and come in and collect them funds and make the payroll. So our office is extremely important. So this is not a raise in which I'm asking for any more money from the council. So if the budget doesn't change from last year to this year, I found the money within my own budget in order to compensate my very qualified workers who have done a tremendous job to make sure our bills are paid on time, our credit rating is still high, and everybody gets paid the way that they're supposed to be paid, including the additional employees that we now have at the community center. So this is, I'm sacrificing, I could have, I could have just put this in my salary because that's what it was originally for. I'm sacrificing taking an increase so that they can be properly compensated, so that we can have good quality people to remain at the town.
Mr. President.
Mr. White.
Excuse me, I was asking this question as for Clerk Treasure. When you said our credit, are you talking about the credit rate of the town, or are you specifically talking about the credit rate of your office?
The credit rating of the town.
Okay.
If we don't, if we don't pay our bills on time, and I don't do what we're supposed to do correctly, the credit rating goes down, then we can't get, we can't get these, you know, bond deals that we do and things like that, because our credit rating will go down. So our, the Clerk Treasure's office is probably one of the most important offices. We work with the building and planning to move this town forward in terms of bond deals and making sure all the finances are correct. And I am, this is money that was allotted for, to increase my salary. As you know, my salary is about between $38,000. Most Clerk, let's just say, everybody can Google it, all, most Clerk Treasurers around here make between $89,000 and $106,000, and my salary is $60,500. And instead of increasing, all I wanted was an increase of 75, but instead of increasing it at all, I am passing on the money that has already been given to me by the council in my budget, in my sovereign capacity, to increase under the statute, and I'm not even creating anything new. This is already part of the ordinance. We're just moving the numbers, even though State Board of Council said we shouldn't do it this way with these numbers here, but we're just moving the numbers from one spot to another spot, which increases the salary. So we're not really changing anything other than what position that.
Yes, Madam Chair, Madam Clerk. Actually, you said that we're triple, we're triple A rating on our town, is that what you're saying?
I didn't say we're triple A, I believe we are.
Double A.
Double A, right?
Double A.
You should know, but yes, we are.
Yeah, I think we're double A.
Double A rating.
Well, thank you for doing a good job in your office, for doing a good job. Thank you.
Yeah, this is something that we want to talk about too, Kelly, because it sounds like it's a workload issue. We don't just ask employees to do more work and then we'll give you more money. It seems like it's a headcount issue, and just to have this kind of show up on the agenda, we may need your balance of your salary for some other issues this year. So just because it's there doesn't mean it can't come out.
Well, I think that's a good idea, Mr.
Well, that's what we need to talk about.
I'm trying to, okay, I'm so sorry.
He's joking.
This is money that is already within my budget, I'm not asking for any money from the town. And in my capacity as Clerk Treasure, I can determine what I pay my employees, that's in the statute, if anybody would ever just read it. It's in the statute. I determine how they're paid, so I'm not asking for any money, I'm, I'm not taking the money that you guys said I could have.
Okay, well, we're doing this tabling this so we can talk about it further, Kelly. So that's, that's where we are. That's what the motion's for, is to table, so. Is there any other discussion on the motion to just hold off till next Tuesday and get into this a little further?
Let me say this as well, because Terrence understands that there's been so much stuff that we've had to do to get the community center up and running, in terms of my office and the time that we spend, he has even found some money in his budget for next year to give to the Clerk Treasure's office to make sure that the employees are compensated for the additional work that needs to be done for, for the community center.
Terrence, you giving away money from your budget to other departments?
He submitted it already.
Mr. President, point of order, Robert's rules of order, there's a motion on the floor to table. It's got a motion and a second, we need to vote on the table, okay? This is discussion that needs to be done. No, there's no discussion on a ta, unless it's for the table.
Right.
And I'm asking that it not be tabled.
This is going to be discussed next Tuesday night.
Any other?
Getting off track on the motion to table.
It's just how we have to do things. Do it again.
All in favor of tabling to next week, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on tonight to second readings, we have ordinance 22-20. It's the ordinance establishing a personnel policy manual for the employees of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, entitled Personnel Policy Manual for the Town of Maryville.
Before we make a motion, Madam Clerk Treasure.
Yes.
Are you okay with all of the changes that's in the new employee handbook?
The email that I received from Mr. Bella, I discussed with him, I sent it to my attorney, I had myself and my office manager look over it. I sent Rick a text and we talked about it, I indeed said that I approved all of the changes, so it's fine, and I've sent an email.
Motion to approve. Second.
We have motion from Mr. Hardaway, second by Mr. Minchuck, for approval on second reading of the Personnel Policy Manual. I will add, under discussion, I did speak with our HR Director today, and she also felt that the ordinance as it's revised would be okay for us to move forward. Any other discussion on the motion for approval? This is a second reading ordinance, I'll open it up for public comment. Is there any public comment on this particular ordinance to approve our new Personnel Policy Seeing none, back to the council. Hearing none, Madam Clerk Treasure, roll call, please.
Mrs. Span.
Yes.
Mr. Hardaway.
Yes.
Mr. Minchuck.
Yes.
Mrs. Duzelak.
Yes.
Mr. Pettit.
Yes.
Mr. White.
Yes.
Mr. Bella.
Yes.
All seven in favor.
Seven in favor, our motion carries. Thank you all. So Kelly, you're always passing me documents during the meetings to sign, and now I'm going to pass one to you, and it states that you, as the elected Clerk Treasure of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, acknowledge and consent to have your employees abide by and be governed under the current Personnel Policy Manual for the Town of Maryville as amended from time to time. So I get to pass you a document?
Thank you. You need to pass me a pen too, though.
You need an ink pen?
I do, I left it in the room.
Clerk Treasure needs an ink pen.
I left it in the other.
Well, let me get you an ink.
Thank you, Jeff.
I thought you would need one. And Judge Velasco, I have a new document for you also, but you signed the last one, this will just be an update, okay? Well, because it's a new manual. No, it's been updated and changed, and we took on a lot of dated material and just kind of updated.
Somebody showed me a new manual.
Oh, we'll get you a copy for sure, absolutely. We don't need it tonight.
Okay, that's good.
Thank you all. Moving on to resolutions, resolution 22-59, it's a resolution transferring monies within the Town of Maryville budgets, it's a $143 decrease and a $143 increase going into uniforms from hardware.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on this motion to transfer a small amount of funds here? Hearing none, all in favor of the transfer, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on tonight to the approval of the American Rescue Plan monies. This is the payment voucher for the week of September 13th. Mr. Hardaway.
Thank you, Mr. President. Before we get into this, Clerk Treasure mentioned some training or something that we probably going to need to go through, somebody's going to have to go through coming out of the Clerk Treasure's office to better understand how we pay ARP money. So as soon as you get that information, you get it to us, we get everybody together, and we'll go from there.
I think this should be added to the executive workshop next week. I did give Kiana a copy, thank you. I did give Kiana a copy of the screenshots. My employees actually went through the training today, and so that's why I found out how urgent it is that we make some changes.
All right, we'll go, get me the information so that I can fully understand what we need to do and we'll do it.
I certainly will.
Okay, the ARP voucher for this evening, $10,329.75. We had a ARP approval meeting this afternoon, and we, I think we approved, I think, three people, three or four, and we tabled a couple.
Three.
Three, approved three, and we tabled a couple. So we are still asking for anybody that has any exterior work that needs to be done and you meet the criteria, please stop into building and planning, fill out the necessary paperwork, and we will get you on the agenda so that we can dispense this money that we have that's available for this project. And at this time, Mr. President, that's my motion to approve $10,329.75.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion from Mr. Hardaway with a second by Mr. Pettit to approve the payment voucher for the ARP purchases for September 13th. Any questions or comments on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, Mr. Hardaway.
Thank you, sir.
Moving on tonight to Board of Zoning Appeals and Large Gathering Actions, Ms. Shine.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our first BCA action is Santiago, applicant Santiago Durango, petitioner Santiago Durango, the owner is this 80th Place Paddock LLC, special exception approval from Section 21-136. Petitioner seeking special exception approval to allow a restaurant in a C2 community commercial zoning district on 2.49 acres. Petitioner would like to occupy an existing restaurant space as a Mexican restaurant. Petitioner states that it will help surrounding businesses by occupying a vacant space. It will not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of the neighboring property. There will be no change to the properties, including utilities, access road, drainage, or traffic plans. Parking is adequate. The restaurant hours will be 11:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Monday through Thursday, 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Friday and Saturday, and 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. on Sunday. It will employ 15 staff members, including the owner. The site will have security cameras. The owner has supplied a menu of the Mexican favorites and desserts. Attorney has a copy of the lease, petitioner, for this petitioner only, at this location only, and for this use only. Mr. Santiago, could you step to the, no, could you step to the mic, please?
Please cut to the podium, sir, and state your name and address for the record, so we can hear you. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Cornelio McGowan, that's my name, on behalf of Santiago Dorado, which is the owner of the El Dorado Mexican Grill. It's on 7970 Broadway here in Maryville.
So does that actually face 80th Place?
It faces Broadway.
Broadway.
It does face Broadway.
Yes.
He's by the Paul Mitchell, Rick.
Oh, thank you.
In there. Make a motion to approve, Mr. President.
Second.
Oh, I see it now, thank you. We have a motion by Mr. Pettit with a second by Mr. Hardaway to approve this petitioner. Any questions or comments on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, congratulations.
Welcome to town.
Welcome to town.
Our next petitioner is Mike Zhang. Mike, could you step to the microphone, please? Petitioner is seeking special exception approval from Section 21-136 to allow a restaurant in a C2 community commercial zoning district on 14.10 acres. Petitioner would like to occupy an existing restaurant space as a cafe-style restaurant. Petitioner states that it will help the surrounding business by increasing foot traffic to the area. It will not impede the normal and orderly development and improvements of the neighboring properties. There will be no changes to the properties, including utility, access roads, drainage, or traffic plans. The parking is adequate. The restaurant hours will be 11:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Monday through Sunday. It will employ five staff members, including the owner. The site will have security cameras. The restaurant will supply a menu of customized drink, ramen, and sweets. Attorney has a. and sweets. Attorney has a copy of the lease. The owner presently has an interior remodel permit for this petitioner only, at this location only, and for this use only.
Hi, my name's Mike, and you guys might know me from the Chinese restaurant on 7235 Taff Street. My parents been running there for a while, and I saw that next door was empty for a while, so we decided to try to bring something new here and help the business in the surrounding area.
Great.
You'll be serving all Chinese food?
No, it's different from Chinese food, so it doesn't impeach my parents' shop. It's more desserts where people could bring their family and hang out, and you could be doing your work, or... We also will offer free internet there, so if people wants to get out and do something, you could come in and sit around and finish your work and so on.
This is occupying a space in the Strack and Vantil Strip there.
Yes, correct. We don't call it that anymore, Mr. Pettit.
I know we don't call it that anymore, but some things, you know...
We probably shouldn't.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, the Old Eagles is a church up at 57th and Harrison, too, right?
I don't think Eagles cares, or we have local...
I don't think Eagles cares either.
Yes. Any other questions or comments for this petitioner?
Motion to approve.
I'm happy it's not a storage unit. That's the problem.
We were hoping for another market to help out, but it didn't go away.
Okay, great. A motion by Mrs. Yuzelak.
Second for discussion.
And there's second by Mr. Minchuck. We're open for discussion, Mr. Minchuck.
Just wanna thank you for coming to town, and I wanna thank you for coming to an area in my ward that needs business. That shopping complex has been closed down for a while. We're trying to lure some people in. We appreciate you making the effort, and hopefully it's a flag to lure more business in as well. So thank you, sir.
That's great. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Mike, motion carries.
Welcome to town.
Thank you.
Our last, Mr. Anderson. Our last petitioner is the United Seat Guardia of Indiana applicant and petitioner, United Seat Guardia of Indiana, and the owners are the First Financial Bank Corp. This is for a variance of use approval from Section 21-189 on 6.51 acres in the C5 Office and Research. The address is 9100 Maryville Road. Petitioner is seeking a variance of use approval from Section 21-189-8 to allow a religious facility. The facility will be 10,000 square feet on a lot of 6.5 acres. The proposed site was initially Zone C5 to permit the construction of the San Ridge Bank. However, that facility was not built, and the site has remained vacant. The petitioner states that it intends to... The intended use is compatible with the neighborhood in which other, which other, the two other churches reside. Once the variance of use is approved, the petitioner will work with the Town of Maryville on all codes and ordinance are met throughout the building process, for this petitioner only, for this location only, and for this use only.
Richard Anderson, 9211 Broadway, Maryville, Indiana. I wanted to show you, I think Sheila handled it pretty well, but this is a picture of the initial structure that'll be built there. This is the house of worship that'll be built there. There are members of the group that are back here tonight.
Did this location change, Mr. Anderson, since you and I spoke about this?
No.
I thought it was gonna go on 93rd and Maryville Road. Catty corner from the other churches that are there?
That's where it's going.
Well, 9100 doesn't quite get us to...
Well, the GIS is 93rd, actually.
We get a more accurate site?
It's basically, this is Maryville Road, and this is the site, this is 93rd. It's exactly the same site that we talked about. This is Maryville Road, 93rd.
Yeah.
So it's the, this is east, and this would be the northeast corner.
So it is going on the corner, then?
Yes. And basically, it's this side. The drainage is back here, so it's here.
That's... So it's not on 93rd Avenue, then?
That's what I was gonna ask, Rick. Richard, you're...
This is gonna be right in the middle of vacant land on both sides.
No, it's up here on 93rd.
It's on 93rd.
Not at 9100. Sheila, is this address correct?
That's the address that...
That's the address of the GIS.
It does say just that.
I'm just trying to be consistent with what the county has signed. The answer is no. It's 93rd.
So to answer my question, it's gonna be on the corner...
The same place that I...
On 93rd Avenue.
Yes.
And Maryville Road.
93rd.
On the northeast corner.
Yes, Maryville Road.
I'm very happy, thank you.
Okay, no problem.
I think the address threw me, Richard.
Yes, you did.
For sure, yeah. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion. Go ahead.
Mr. Hardaway?
Second for discussion.
Go ahead.
Second for discussion, Mr. President.
There's a lot of seconds here.
Yeah, I know.
Pettit, I'll recognize for the second. Go ahead.
Thank you. Richard, the triangle, for those that don't, and Rick, you were on the council when I was town manager. The town realigned Maryville Road out of the Maryville Road Tiff District, basically vacating what was the old alignment of Maryville Road to Buchanan Street, for all practical purposes. You show on your survey in our packet, Lot 1, which is where the religious facility's gonna go.
Yes.
Then you show, is that saying, what does that say, 92nd Street?
Yes.
Are you, is the church gonna build that?
That's probably going to be the entrance.
The entrance, is that gonna be cul-de-sac? Is that a dedicated street? Is that gonna be cul-de-sacked?
We're still working on that.
All right. Because I don't think we have any intention of going to the old alignment of Maryville Road.
No, we don't.
That's gonna have to be a cul-de-sack. Can't be a dead-end street.
Right. So it probably, for now, will be an entrance only into this site.
All right. Now then, is Lot 2 a buildable lot that they might do something with?
Lot 2 has the ability. You can see the box that's shown in your drawings.
Right.
This is the drainage. So all drainage for these two lots, actually for that Lot 2, are, is, is right here.
Okay.
So the, so the reason that I included that in the petition, so it's Lot 1 and 2, is to make sure we got the drainage in there and everything on this side. Now, it could be that it could expand later. You know, the diocese, I don't know what they're exactly doing with their property.
Neither do we.
You know, it's, so I think this, for now, probably, they would come in with some type of a stub to get into the, the new facility.
So are you gonna vacate the public roadway that's dedicated, then?
Well, that's, I think we're gonna wait until their engineers kinda draw... Step 1 is to make sure that the use of the land is proper. Step 2 would be to figure out, there might be some vacation discussion with this, but that'll come later.
What type of investment, Rich? Do you have any idea?
The cost of the house of worship? $7 million.
$7 million investment.
I don't have a problem with it, counsel. Mr. Svetnov? Thank you, Richard.
Thank you.
We have a motion on the floor by Mr. Hardaway with a second by Mr. Pettit for approval of this petitioner. Any other discussion from the council? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, same sign. Motion carries, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you very much.
Looks like a beautiful building.
Yep.
Moving on tonight to old business. Any old business before us, counsel?
Mr. President, I have an old business. Unfortunately, this old business goes back to 2009, and several of the residents, in fact, I think all the residents from Sand Piper subdivision are here. And back in 2009, we found out that a gentleman acquired a park slash drainage easement in the Sand Piper subdivision. Historically, for those, Sand Piper was built in the county, and Susie White is standing up, will probably correct me with the wrong date. As you know, we incorporated 1971. These houses were built probably before that, or right around that time, and they were annexed into the Town of Maryville in the incorporation. Sheila has got the plat, the county has the plat, and it's clear on the plat that this is a park and drainage easement. It's gone through a couple iterations in the tax card that I pulled today, and currently it is owned by a lady in Mississippi. At this time, and I want to apologize to the residents, because this should've been taken care of in 2009 with the previous town attorney. Our previous planning and building administrator had everything lined up. I don't know why we did not get it, folks, and that's on me. I have to take the hit on that. But tonight, I'm going to instruct the town attorney, as of tomorrow, to send a letter to the lady in Mississippi. Number 1, informing her that because it's identified as a park, there is absolutely, positively, no hunting to take place. With that letter, Joe, I want you to give a copy to Pat. Pat, I want you to get the addresses or give it to me, and I'll get it with Susie and Dennis White. I want everybody in Sand Piper to have a copy of that letter that Joe's gonna send to the lady in Mississippi. To that end, Joe, I don't know if you can do it in the same letter, I would request you ask the lady to consider a donation of that property that is non-buildable, it's worthless to her. I'm sorry that she got it on tax sale for whatever she paid. That's not my concern, my concern are those residents. So you can either donate it, and I want an answer from her in writing. If she says no, I want to instruct you to begin eminent domain. We are gonna get that property, and it's gonna go into Matt's inventory in stormwater. It's that simple. I can't make it any easier. Again, folks, I apologize. I know you guys came out. You're more than welcome to speak under public comment, but that's what we're gonna do, and I'm gonna solve this once and for all. And I apologize it took this long. Dennis, I appreciate the phone call last week. I know the gentleman called, the bow hunter called me, and I told him he's not gonna hunt. We've got a problem, folks, and I know I'm gonna upset some of my constituents out in the panhandle, but Mr. Bella and I talked about this on the phone today. Maryville's getting so populated and so developed that, you know, our ordinance says 10 acres or more for a shotgun hunting. I don't think we can do that anymore. We had the same argument with folks from my area in the Broadfield Town Homes, where Mr. Brant was allowing them to hunt on the acreage between Georgia and I-65 and the hospital. That's not acceptable. And we're getting out into the panhandle where I don't know what to do anymore, Joe. I'm gonna turn to you and my council affairs committee and looking at this hunting ordinance and what we may or may not want to do. And again, I know I'm gonna upset some hunters out there. I gotta think about the overall safety of the rest of the residents. I've got Ross Metal Farms, I've got Grassfields, Sand Piper, Lincoln Mill, Old Mill Court. I've got my subdivision in the Preserve. It's getting too residential out in the panhandle. This is not 1971, where it was all wide open, and hunters could go do, you know, farmers would let the hunters hunt. I, we can't do it. So that's what I'd like, Mr. Svetnov, is the letter to the property owner, informing him.
If you'll give me the contact information...
I will give you a tax card.
...for the property owner, because I'd be glad to get communication out.
I will get you a tax card. Folks, we'll get you a copy of that letter, and then I'll let, probably go through Dennis and Susie, because I've got their phone number, and I will let you know what the lady says. If she says no, Joe's got his marching orders as of tonight with my motion.
Just for clarification's sake, we tell her to consider a don't tax, basically, a tax favorable donation. If we don't get the tax favorable donation, are we gonna say we buy it back for the purchase price she bought it for regarding off of the tax sale?
Well, this is interesting, ladies and gentlemen. Sheila, you are on top of things. I gotta applaud Sheila. Sheila gives me her phone, and she got an email from Kimberly Perry. "Good morning, Ms. Schein. My name is Kimberly Perry with Coldwell Banker. I have a client by the name of Yolanda Earl who wants to list her property at 9140 Vigo Street. She is located out of state and did not have all the information needed. I wanted to know if the property is commercial or residential." Clearly residential, right, folks? "And if the buildable, and if it is a buildable property?" No, it's not, because you can't get to it. Why don't you share that email with Joe and I, Sheila, and we'll continue. Maybe we can go through Ms. Perry, her realtor.
Hold on, folks.
Hang on a second.
If I, if I do not get the charitable donation, I need instruction. Do I have the right to pay, to offer her the amount she paid for it and redeem it off, or basically redeem it from her like she did off a tax?
We're gonna, we're gonna refund her tax sale amount. I've got the tax card. It's being assessed at $7,800. I'm not really crazy about paying $7,800. I did this in my subdivision, did the $252,000, right, guys? And we bought a retention bond. We had to.
But here's the thing, eminent domain might cost you a lot more than $7,800.
Because of the process you have to go through.
Well, yeah.
Appraisals and stuff.
Right. We're gonna have to get two appraisals. So hopefully she'll donate it, once we get the letter that it's non-buildable. I would get with Sheila.
This is, this is kinda the, I'm hearing about this today, so I just wanna...
I wonder what's gonna happen if she decides not, or if she's, if she gives, she makes your offer and says no, well, I'll give it back, but not for $900. I want $10,000.
She paid $900.
Right. That shows in the tax card. And I'm gonna give that tax card, Dennis, to Joe here after the meeting.
Well, let me, let me offer this, Mr. Pettit. We did analyze the lot, and Mr. Lake helped us with that, and there really should be, there's no hunting allowed there at all. So our police department was inaccurate when they told the hunters they could stay there, because they had a letter from her, et cetera. But the way this 10 acres is laid out, it is still within 400 feet from other properties of all the different lots.
Yep.
Plus, it's designated a park.
So, well, it is. So hunting is not allowed there, Chief. Cuttino, if you can let the officers know. And we can help out with some posting of signs there, Mr. Pettit.
Yep.
So hunting is not allowed there anyway, no matter who owns the property, and we'll make sure that we enforce that.
Well, not only police enforcement.
Especially with other weapons besides shotguns. You can't shoot arrows into town or 30-out sixes that travel two miles, a bullet. The whole idea about a shotgun was that it goes a small distance and sprays out, and it's not gonna go in someone's house a mile away.
Right.
You know, so hunting is not allowed there, and so let's sign it properly and move forward, Mr. Pettit.
Okay.
Can you put that, everything you said, just say, I so move, please?
I so move to instruct the town attorney to send the letter to the property owner. He knows what to put in it, and we'll get it to the residents as well.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. White. And the reason I'm doing this is, you know, we have to authorize the expenditure for Joe. And then, Madam Clerk Treasurer, could you please ask your office to put this particular part of the meeting, type it verbatim, everything Mr. Pettit said?
Yes.
Because it was kinda complex.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Any other discussion on Mr. Pettit's motion? And we'll get to residents in a second, okay? No other discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Mr. Svetnov, you have your marching orders for us. Thank you.
We'll get done tomorrow.
And again, Pat, make sure we get the letter to the residents, and we, while you were out, pass on to Steve through Chief Cuttino that we're gonna post no hunting signs on Vigo Court.
Well, not only that, if there's hunters seen out there, they should probably contact the police department.
Yes.
And the police department should strictly enforce that.
Yep.
Yes, exactly. Anything else on our old business? New business? Any new business before us? There's no special presentations tonight. Public comment, and we'll ask you to come to the podium, state your name and address, and we'll allow three minutes for public comment. Is there any public comment tonight?
My name is Gene Velasco. I am the judge of the Maryville Town Court, and I thought I could just sit there quietly without causing any disturbance. However, I hear that I make more money than Kelly, and that's inaccurate.
No, I said, except for you.
Okay, there you go.
Everybody but, but you.
We have at least, we have at least two or three administrators that make more, so they're, okay, that's, that's all I wanna say for the day. I'll save the rest of my comments next time we meet again.
Thank you, Judge.
You're welcome.
Is there any other public comment?
That is fair, yeah.
Let's please offer attention to the speakers tonight. Please be respectful. Sir? Go ahead.
Brian Massarch, 201 East 68th Place. I just wanna address Ward 6 members and my Ward 6 counselor. The way you spoke to the Clerk Treasurer tonight with the disrespect and disdain is absolutely unacceptable. It doesn't matter whether you like what she's saying or not. She should have the opportunity to say what she has to say and argue for what she has to argue. That's the American way. Trying to stop her and shut her down is absolutely 100% unacceptable. This is why we need this guy gone.
So much for the civil... Yes, sir, go ahead.
My name is Ruth Speer. I live at 7794 Wright Street, in the old golf course, was now Foxmore. And I have to thank town manager Patrick, as he came out... And I have to thank town manager Patrick, as he came out and he looked around, and we had a little meeting with him, and the roads are finally paved after four and a half years. And we still have the issue, of course, like everywhere else. The speeders go through the 20 miles an hour speed zone, but they still go at 40 miles an hour. And then we have some young children who go on open-wheelers, three-wheelers, four-wheelers, they fly through the streets. But we are thankful that the streets are paved. That was a big thing. But it's still, when you come at nighttime from 30 into Morton Street, it's very dark, and it's hard to follow the road. Now, I can see pretty good in the dark, but I'm not sure if some of the other people can. So I don't know if there's going to be lines put up or something like that, but I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Thank you, Patrick.
Thank you. Is there any other public comments this evening?
My name is Susie White. I live at 9170 Vigo Street. It's a Crown Point Mailing-Holbert phone number, but I live in the town Panhandle. I just want to say thank you to my neighbors who came here tonight to support their community. I want to say to the town council, thank you for being here tonight to hear us out. My neighbors don't know this, but I did have a speech written. You all have a copy of it. It was done with great sincerity. It was done with a great deal of work and a bottle of wine or two. I do want to tell you that the future of this property at 9140 Vigo Street should be formally secured by regaining possession and placing it in the capable hands of the Storm and Water Department. When most of us moved into the Panhandle, and those of you who live in town will never understand, we moved there because it's quiet. We moved there because our neighbors are next door, but not too close. We moved there because we could support each other from a distance. We have never asked for much. The Panhandle is a very quiet place, so I hope you will take this matter seriously, because if you don't, we will be back.
One of the first... Susie, one of the first things Linda Petrus told me when we were campaigning is, it's different in the Panhandle, and it still is. And I tell my guys, my colleagues, that all the time. The Panhandle is a different area, and it's a good area.
And I also told you, if you won that seat at this council, I would be a royal pain in your butt.
I welcome you.
Is there any other public comment tonight?
If we didn't have it, right? I wonder if she would have liked it.
Shonda Flowers, 6137 Connecticut Street, Maryville, Indiana. I wanted to first publicly thank the HR department for the training that the employees... Well, not the employees, but those chosen employees had with Governor Holcomb's Chief of Inclusive and Diversity. It was an excellent training, I must admit. When we implemented the statement of diversity, I was leery regarding the work that would need to go behind the words that were put there, and I was very pleased when going to that training, that I didn't think I would... That I was going to attend, to be honest. I wasn't going to go as an employee, because I was skeptical about the work being done behind the word. And I was disheartened to see... I mean, besides working for the court, I've worked in corporate America for years, and I've never worked in an environment where your voice didn't seem to matter. And more importantly, that the work that goes behind the words mean more than the actual words itself. So it was very disheartening to see that we did not have the people in attendance that really needed to be there as town leaders. Majority of the leadership was not there. Although we are moving in strides with regards to inclusion and diversity, we're not there yet. And so I challenge the council, as an employee, that you do the work in an effort to make sure that all employees, regardless of agreements, disagreements, working for the court, has been a very hostile environment, and it doesn't have to be. I've had many years of experience that you may not like the person that you work with, you may not like what they stand for, but there still has to be a possibility that we can work together as leaders of this town, and that includes the court office. Our staff, our employees are just as important as any other staff that works here, although our office may be sovereign. We still wear, and we still honor, and are held accountable to being an employee of the town. In order for us to move forward, just as people, one of the things for those that did not have an opportunity to come to the training, I challenge you to really look at the presentation that Kathy sent out to everyone, and one of the things that stood out the most to me was two people who were on opposing sides arguing passionately, which I can come to respect, because I don't bow down, and you guys don't either. But it was interesting, because when you really look at the basis of the picture, the number 6 was on the ground, and on the other side was the number 9. And each side was arguing very passionately about what they felt. But it's interesting when you actually see things from a different perspective, that you can see why people may have their point of passionately argue. So I hope that, moving forward, that we can find a mutual way to be able to work. Our office has to work with all of these ordinances that the citizens of this town want written. They have to come through the court at some point. And so we have a vested interest, as long as the court is here, to do what's best, because